Yeah, we're gonna.
Chairman, we're left.
Okay, welcome, everybody. I know we're kind of short on time, but the gist of the long story is that we're kind of growing up up here in Valley County. We have a lot of folks moving in that are looking for anything and everything that they can come after us and sue us on. And the discussion lately has been dealing with code enforcement. We have a lot of not only in planning and zoning and in the building department, but we also have road violations. We also have the we department violations. We need to have somebody that has a little more muscle to go after some of these folks, to write the letters, to go out and actually look at these sites and are physically able to maybe even issue a citation. I don't know. What I want to talk about is how can we fix this problem? How do we solve this issue? Because we've got to update our code enforcement process because it's not working. It's been working, but we just have different folks up here now. And I'm open to suggestions, some ideas from you guys on how to approach this. And you did send us the stuff from Gem County. I really like that.
I sent you one from Gem County, Cootney County, Payette County. And they have different ways of doing things. And most of the counties, I'd say throughout the state, do what Cootney County does and what Gem County do.
Where they have a law enforcement person that does that?
It's a code compliance enforcement that is in the planning and zoning area. I think Cootney County has three people. And their ultimate enforcement is that they'll cloud a title. I mean, several years ago, we adopted those codes in Valley County so we can record a document that says this property isn't in compliance. You know, you cloud their title. We have that in our ordinance now, and we had started making some forms. We haven't gone there.
But how does that help with the road issues or the we department issues?
Well, we would just have to, in my opinion, is adopt codes specific to that areas and designate somebody to enforce those code compliance issues. And that's why I sent you, you know, my recommendation. I mean, if I had another person, I believe my department would be able to write letters. We could, I mean, weeds, I mean, that's, we would just have to blanket people with letters. But when it comes right down to it, I don't know what our hammer would be. I don't know if Oki had time to look at what Gem County does where they enabled their code compliance person to actually write citations.
So in order, Sheriff, in order to do citations, they have to be post-certified? They would have to go to post to be trained, or can anybody write a citation?
I have to look. Criminal citations, yes, but like Parks and Rec gets to write some citations, but others they have to have a deputy.
I guess what I'm looking at is I want to be able to take the heat off you two and even the road department. We have a guy that's violated one of our policies, whether it's a covert in a county road or the guy that's got a fill full of weeds, like me. And you don't have to enforce it. You can call the code enforcement person and they can do the investigation. They can issue the citation. They can fill out the paperwork if it ends up going to the prosecutor. You guys don't have that ability, I don't think. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I just don't think you should be put in that position. I don't know. I'm looking for answers.
Back up a second. I mean, we're in a transition period. We don't have to have all the answers today. We just have to be making a process as we go. So I think that, first of all, where some of the frustrations have arisen, where there's been concern, is that we don't have properly trained individuals yet. I think some of that is Todd's brand new. We've gone through three code compliance officers so far. The system is getting built. Hopefully Todd's going to be with us for a while. So I think that our conversation right now is how do we train people on this? Is there classes that he could go to? Are there things that he could do? We can pass an ordinance. Many other counties are doing it in Idaho when they're issuing citations. So there has to be some way to replicate what those other counties are currently doing in the civil process. And maybe that's something we want to go to. But right now, we do have some concerns, some things that are happening. And that's been busy this summer, and I get that. However, we, there are ordinances in place that are not currently being completed, and that's not appropriate. We can't violate our own ordinance. I mean, it is a law that's out there. We can't violate it ourselves and then expect other people to follow our laws. And so we need to find a way to do the setback requirements. We need to find out a way to, you know, do those measurements, making sure that things are happening. When something's set, it's a lot harder to move it after it's set. So we need to try and figure out what that process is. Who's going to do that work? And we're going to be having conversations on impact areas. There's going to be things that we're going to have to do there. So, you know, looking at personnel is probably an appropriate thing to do because we are, everybody's slammed right now. It's summer. It's busy, which is our busiest time. There are other areas else, right? You know, that there are violations that we need to make sure that we are following our own laws. We cannot expect other people to follow laws if we're not going to follow our own. And so that's really critical that we enforce what's out there. But in my opinion, right now, it's a training issue. I think that we need to, I think the personnel that we have in place are great. I think that they need some further training. We need to figure out where our holes are and plug those holes instead of just recreating a whole nother wheel. That's my opinion.
Well, that's what I mentioned earlier is that I don't believe in recreating the wheel. That's why I was asking Brian about what other counties doing. And I appreciate what you sent to us. When you said clouding a title, is that, is that like putting a lien on it in the way that you're not going to be able to sell this property unless you straighten up what you messed up?
Right. When you record something, I mean, you're recording something at the recorder's office that says that they're in violation of the local ordinances. And if they go to sell the property, that's going to be picked up in a title report. And it's going to cloud their title. That's what, yeah.
So they won't be able to sell it unless whatever is ordinance is.
Unless it's a cash seller or something, probably. That's what La Ta County does. We, you know, duplicated. A lot of counties do it. That's what Cootney's county is doing, La Ta. You know, it's a notice of non-compliance.
So Cindy, when you do that, are they notified that owner, hey, you did this wrong. You're out of compliance? And so they can either say, well, screw the county. I'm going to let it go. Cloud my title. I don't care. I'm never going to sell.
Yeah. My proposal in the documents I sent to you is it would be a series of letters saying, did you know that you were in violation of this? This is what you need to do. Well, if they say, I'm not going to comply, I mean, we tell them what's going to happen and give them a chance to rectify, you know, the violation. And then we cloud their title. If it's something more severe, there's, you know.
It's a health and safety issue.
Health and safety or conditional use permit, that type of thing, where they're supposed to do certain specific things. Then we go through the enforcement process where we do notice a violation. It's a more formal process. And we have our investigation report put together. And that, I mean, I think we've sent one on to the prosecutor. And that's a whole different process depending on security. But these people that are just, you know.
So that's coming out of planning and zoning. And Todd, you have, and that doesn't have that same capability. And so what my concern is, is making sure that we have the appropriate personnel with the time and the ability to do it. I mean, right now, that is in your division. You've got to do this.
And we're doing, we're doing all we can do. We are.
I think with an F.
Stepping up.
I think with an F, the two can work together, the two bills, so that you don't have to cloud a title. That's in her wheelhouse. You can say, here's the violation. I have no way to make them change this. But you have in your wheelhouse to be able, because it is an ordinance that has been violated. You can put that in, into that.
Well, what I'm trying to get to is you don't have time to go out and, somebody calls, hey, this guy's doing this on his lot, you know. There should be someone that can go out and do that. You notify the code compliance officer, hey, we may have a violation out on wherever. Would you go check that out? Because you are already slammed. Same thing with you. And you're going to get more slammed if we end up doing something different in the impact areas.
I said, if you hire me somebody, we can do all of this.
Well, I think we're going to have to hire somebody, or we're going to have to get somebody a lot more trained really fast. Because these things are going to start piling up on us.
Well, the code on building inspections for the placement permits for the containers was just July of 2023. I mean, the other ones that need to be brought into compliance, I mean, that ordinance was just a couple of years ago also. So there isn't a huge backlog right now.
There's been a number of placement permits, and it needs to be done in a timely fashion. Once you place something, you can't just call and say, hey, you placed incorrectly. I mean, there's got to be something that is, that is triggered upon that placement permit. And personally, $25 placement permit, it doesn't even cover our costs. So, you know, we need to look at our funding stream for that to make sure that we're covering our costs. And then once a placement permit is issued, then, you know, I don't know what that next step is. I'd want to see what other counties are doing, but they need to know exactly what their setback rules are, you know, and somebody needs to be out there fairly soon. When Jeff issues a Colbert permit, you know, he's issuing Colbert permits. We may not be back out there for a year. Well, they may not have been put in place correctly. So how do we, how do we make sure that the permits we're issuing are enforced to county standard?
My inspectors won't even come out. $65 come out. Twenty-five's way low.
So from, from my point of view, there are, first of all, when, when I say code enforcement, what I mean is the duty that the county has to enforce the ordinances that we have in place, which really touches almost every single department, not just the two that are sitting here at the table. And so, and so there, there has to be a, I think there has to be a priority for each one of the departments that if we're going to have rules, then everybody has to be held to the same standard. If we have rules in place and they're, they're not consistently enforced or they're not consistently followed, then what we've done is we've penalized the people who follow the rule and we've incentivized someone who's not. So you're almost better off getting rid of the rule if you're not going to put a priority on enforcement and then having it in place. Now, that being said, my one, my one guidepost for regulatory philosophy is educate before you regulate. This is not, this is not supposed to be, it's not designed to be a gacha game. It really is make sure that the people in the community understand what the ordinances require, that they understand that, that they have to follow them, and that if we're going to require them to follow them, we're going to require their neighbor to follow them and the, and the third door down the road, just, just the very same. So, so that, I mean, if you approach it with that kind of a philosophy, then I think you can build, you kind of build this concept, and that helps guide you to what kind of, really, what kind of training does the code enforcement folks need? How are we going to hold them accountable to, to go out there and implement, implement those things? And, and keep in mind, most of the penalties that are in the ordinance as it is right now is misdemeanor violation. I hope we never charge anybody with a misdemeanor, ever. That there are a hundred steps between the first call that we get to it ever gets to our office for, 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 I mean, if it gets to my desk, something really bad has gone. I mean, just, we've got, you know, a lot.
Sounds like we need to look at our ordinances and do some work on them.
Yes.
So is that something maybe Artie could help us with?
Sure. Yeah, I think so. And there needs to be some, some integration of, you know, how can we, you know, record documents to notify potential buyers that there's, you know, there's been issues with the property and they need to be cleared up? How do we give, and even, you know, civil fines way before we get to a misdemeanor, a misdemeanor section? So then you've got these stepped up procedures in place. And then your code enforcement officer or officers know exactly what the process is. And if you go around and look at some of the other counties, and I know a few, the majority of the work that that person does, and it, and it really is almost driven by mediating disputes between neighbors, as much as it is anything. Most of the complaints that come in is this neighbor has complained about that neighbor or vice versa. And, and so you've got to have the right person that really knows how to talk to people, de-escalate, de-escalate those tense situations.
And there's training for that.
And there's training. There is. That's where, that's where I, I haven't looked at the curriculum at post, but I think post offers a lot of code enforcement type trainings for, for those counties that do hire their code enforcement officers in the sheriff's office. They, they can send them to post and get some of that.
Another part of it is you don't want, you want this one to slide because if this person sees the county let that slide, you can get away with this. And then you just snowball. You got a problem. And that's why I see a real need for this. With this county growing, going forward, we need some kind of professional help on that end.
We do have the alternative penalties in the ordinance that aren't the misdemeanor criminal charges.
Yeah. And, and I think it just need, we just need to make sure that we, because like, if you take noxious weeds as, as an example, we, there is a very, a very comprehensive statute that goes through all of the prohibitions for noxious weeds, what the penalties are, what the requirements are for compliance, what the county weed superintendent's job is to enforce that. It's very prescriptive and it's very laid out in the statute. So if, if that, if there isn't anything more that needs to happen than just follow the statute with noxious weeds, then we don't need to necessarily implicate that program in our ordinance, but there needs to be that kind of a review where it's like, okay, are we covered in the ordinance with noxious weeds or are we just living in the statute and that's going to work fine? The permits for construction in the right of way, how, I mean, does it make sense to do it similar to the building department or the planning and zoning violations? Or does there need to be a kind of a, a little bit different process for that? Because it's a different, it's a different requirement. So, so I guess that's what I would say, let's look at what the enforcement mechanism is for each one of your programs, each one of your departments and the, and the ordinances that they have to enforce.
So just real quick, Jeff or Dan, what main issues do you guys usually have as far as code compliance in roads?
Little boxes. That's the main one.
Used to be coverts for driveways. I know we.
Coverts. It's great working with the building department because there's a little check box on the bottom. So if they don't have an approach permit, it catches it. It comes to me. The big one that's really key to us right now is the websites. You provide the law. And tomorrow we can put a driveway in, and a camper's sitting there.
No covert? No covert?
Over permit.
Correctly. Some of them are.
But no permit?
They have not got a permit. The one time I see them is if I'm out driving around.
So what if we get?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just thinking, what if we get started, you know, we have Todd on staff. Let's get him some additional assistance, maybe some additional stuff. We, we start with these two divisions and we add to it. I mean, if we, if we don't everything at once, I would be overwhelmed. I could get a lot of work done. But it's like, how do we, how do we make sure that our divisions, every one of the division leads know you have a responsibility to code enforcement, looking at Jeff or Dan? And when you don't, when you see something that needs to be caught, then yeah, we talked to Todd maybe to start with. Or, or design something, but I'm just thinking it's overwhelming to take all of it at once. Let's, let's figure out what it is that we need to do to get some placement permits done. Maybe start some stuff with the road department, get him trained in the proper documentation. I think that's Brian's concern is that you got to have this stuff documented correctly because we can't enforce anything unless we have proper documentation.
I'd say a lot of the people that put those driveways in don't know that they need a permit.
Right.
Most of it is, is an education. I mean, we get people doing that all the time in planning and zoning things. It's like your item letter, hey, you needed a pond permit. Hey, you need this permit. Oh, and they apply, they come into compliance. Done.
And I agree with you 100%, but I think there's going to be a few cases where people just get obstreperous. You don't have to, you can't make me do this. Then I think we need somebody with some, some strength behind them to go to these campers and to go to these people and say, hey, you haven't done this. You've been told. You've been educated. Now we need to play hardball. Because if we don't, we're going to, we're going to start sliding again.
Well, then we.
You can take a deputy with a code enforcement officer.
Well, maybe that's it. Maybe that's the answer too. I don't know. But I just know that I could start to see things piling up that's not getting resolved. And to get so far back that we're not going to be able to catch up.
Well, I think, I, I mean, hearing two things right here. One is that you've got your complaint-driven enforcement inspections that, I mean, you respond to a complaint. And two, there's that proactive approach to educate in the community about, we have rules that you may not be aware of, and that it requires that person to be out in the community and looking for, you know, looking for those kind of things and looking for opportunities to interact with these landowners and say, hey, you need a building permit or you need an approach permit or something along those lines. And, and I, I, I think that's, I think that's a point of emphasis because it really kind of starts the whole process of how you're going to design the expectations for code enforcement going forward. Do you want them to simply focusing on responding to complaints? Or do you want them to be proactive and out in the community, doing both? And if, and if it's both, then, then you got to scope out, you know, how much.
I don't know if they necessarily need to be driving around looking for infractions to a code, but Jeff gets enough complaints or he's talked to this person over and over and over. Same thing with Cindy or Net. And they're just like, you know, I don't have to do this.
And that's the purpose, I think that's the purpose of the conversation is to try to drill down and figure out how, you know, how you want to prioritize those, those kind of things. My conversation with Jim was they're trying to morph more into a proactive educate the community, be visible in the community more than just the program they currently have is, is complaint-driven. Neighbors are mad because they got junk piling up or the dogs barking all hours of the night. Or, you know, the setbacks weren't followed or whatever.
So I, I think that if we started with, you know, just fine tuning our enforcement portion, whether it's in, you know, the weeds, the roads, the building, the P and Z, and make sure all of those match each other. And then we have a policy of who's going to enforce it or actually put it in the ordinance. And if it's the code compliance person, I mean, I think Todd can do it if we have another person. I mean, because we would like to the public education, yes. That's, that's what I'm proposing. If we have another person.
We're going to have to train Todd so he knows how to handle approach permits or.
Well, that, that's wouldn't be, I mean, Jeff will still go out and inspect them and things, but the point will be if they didn't get one, then we'll send them the letter saying you need an approach permit. Or if they have a gate in a right of way, did you know that you can't have a gate in a public right of way? Please remove it.
Jeff usually does that. What I'm seeing is 99% of the time, the education part works. And it's the 1% that are going to hang us up.
And you do your investigation.
I mean, the main thing that I've seen in other jurisdictions is any temporary structures that's area, I mean, that happens within the, it's not supposed to occur. There are these issues that consistently get resolved, if you will. And it's primarily from a maintenance perspective. Because the maintenance, maintenance person, engineer, whoever it might be, is the one that sees it and says, okay, that's a, that would be a violation of anything that we have that would help or hinder the drainage in that particular area. The one thing that I was kind of, my craziness here, it's almost like you need a countywide homeland association, right? In a way, like a homeowners association, because that's what it's, it's driving you towards is that you have to find the area that you're, you're the most concerned about and having people associated with that help you. The one thing that I was thinking about in terms of any kind of education, you know, IACR is coming around. That might be a good topic and discussion, a good class that can potentially, you know, if, if there was a connection of other jurisdictions that are having similar issues, which I'm sure probably a quarter, it would be a good topic for them to discuss at that, at that meeting.
What meeting is it?
It's IACR's.
I don't know what that one is. IACR's, I've never heard that term.
Idaho Association of County Engineers and Road Superintendents.
Oh, got it. Okay. So that would be good for, you know, to have somebody attend if Todd were to go with you guys, if you're going up to that.
It's those associations that will help, help train, you know, folks along the way, so.
So Cindy, if we were to put an extra person in your position, in your area, so what responsibilities would lighten up for Todd that you could give to this new person so that he could specifically be code enforcement pretty much only? You would need to design a job description.
Right. I've, I've had discussions with Lori and Todd on how that would be, you know, divided. And, I mean, Todd helps with noticing. Todd helps with, he does all the administration permits, the short-term rentals, the ADUs, the RVCs. He does the payment vouchers. He does anything that needs to be done that we're too busy to do. So if we had another person to help Lori, or if Todd helped Lori and the other person did more of the code compliance stuff, I mean, you'd have to figure out which.
I just feel like your education part is good enough. You're going to handle 99% of your issues are going, you're going to solve with folks. But the 1% is, and I keep coming back to that, we need somebody with a lot more authority.
Well, the 1% are the ones that we've built a record on. You know, and that's what gets sent to the prosecutor. You have an investigation report the prosecutor can prosecute if, if there's even 1%. I mean, I mean, we've sent the, the letters. We've done notices of violations. We've taken the pictures. We have the whole package.
So could that person go do a road complaint?
Well, probably not an engineering complaint. But they could do a, there's a post box in the right of way. There, those types of things. But I don't see them going out and assessing whether or not the drainages work properly.
What are the engineers for?
That'd be an engineer's thing. So ask Brian, on the, like Gem County and whatnot, those code compliance guys, did they go to this next step and be post-certified, kind of like the sheriff was talking about?
I, I don't know. I don't think so. But I don't know the answer definitively for that. But I do think that the, the training, wherever you get it, whether it's from post or somewhere else, that is, that is critical. And especially if, I, I would not recommend giving the person the authority to write a citation unless they have the training, knowledge, and the ability. unless they have the training, knowledge and the ability to, to be able to handle that. And we, and we evaluate that very closely because that can turn into a real problem real fast. If, if you've got somebody that.
I would assume that would go through your office first, where they even write it like that.
Not quite sure how, how, how they do that. I, i- it just kind of pings all of my, the red flags that I have with legal issues that, I, I mean, really a citation is, is there's no legal review. There's no internal review at all. It's just one person individually making a decision and, and in essence issuing a fine. Uh, that, that might be good for efficiency purposes and would work, work in most scenarios, but that could.
I think we need to ferret out that process.
We need to flush that one out.
Because they adopted this resolution that enabled their code compliance person in Jim County to issue citations.
We would need to work on that one. Probably, I mean, I know that, I don't know how many citations we've issued in the five years I've been here. I don't think any. And I mean, it's not.
I got a question for Kevin. It's, when you send somebody to post, I mean, I, I know what it's like when you send a deputy. And you send people to post that have a, I mean, it's not a complete post, it's for certain levels.
They have either green, intention, directions, permission for all or control. I don't know. I have never seen a class just for, um, compliance. And I stand ready to send my resources out to help these guys on the one or two percent that that comes up on. But I do not wanna just take this on as an umbrella thing because quite frankly, where we get our credibility to be in SMEs, by what I mean by that is subject matter experts. And building, we're not building people and we're gonna be outsmarted by the builder who's been doing them since, since he was a kid. And if, if, you have to know what you're talking about out there. So basically, it would be a deputy going out with one who is a subject matter expert and their advice and then signing the citation with them. But as far, that's the one thing that we make sure of is you know what, what, what misdemeanor stops and felony starts, where infractions stop and misdemeanor starts. You have to know what you're doing out there. You lose all credibility. And the minute we lose our credibility as a county, we look like idiots.
There is an organization called CEPI, Code Enforcement Professionals of Idaho. And there is a national organization of code enforcement professionals. I've been to the, the local ones down in Boise for a few years.
I wanna get a certification. And the other thing, we put through somebody through post, they're gonna go get a job with the police force because they pay more. So therefore, you know, you give that kind of training and, and you'll never have anything that's sustainable.
No, we need like, just a code enforcement training. The CEPI intrigues me. Have you sent Todd to any of those or is that?
No, I, you know, a couple of years ago, the person that ramrodded it, um, she left Mountain Home. Um, and I haven't really tried tracking it down. This Larry in Jim County, he was always at all of those classes. He actually packs. And I can ask him if they continue to have that, those classes and stuff.
Let's call it a day. Maybe we can, before we do, let's.
Can we do one more thing?
Just check out, see what's available for education first.
And that's got issues within your division. I think we need to change the ordinance that states that you issue placement permits. And if we're gonna give you another employee, I think that needs to transition over and code enforcement do that.
Well, the ordinance says that the building department's responsible for building inspections.
I understand that. That's what I'm saying.
Is that included placement?
I think that, but, and I, but I think they still need to issue the building permit so we don't have to set up a whole new process. And then we'll, we'll go out and inspect.
What's a building? That's what needs clarified further. I mean, if they're issuing a building permit and it's a Conex, is that, you know, it is a building, but what are you gonna be inspecting versus what they're gonna be inspecting? So that needs still clarified. They'll do the setbacks, we'll do, that's it. That's all the setbacks.
We'll do the placement permits and the Conex, that, which include the containers. That's the way we.
And you would do the setbacks?
We will do the setbacks.
You will do setbacks too. Okay. I think we need to clarify, make sure that that's very clear on who's doing what.
Right. But the code currently says building department. We'll have to change that. So I'm saying, if we make some ordinance tweaks and look at the, the penalties. We might be able to do it all at once and figure this out.
I think we need somebody to, one of our biggest issues is sheds. I mean, these are letters we've wrote for sheds with people living in them. You know, we need somebody that can do something like that as well.
So that, in, in my opinion, cause that is a, we, we talk about it all the time. It's a big issue. I mean, people are out there living in them, but they have no other place to live. I mean, so is that the opportunity that we cloud their title or do we take the deputy out there and, and, you know, forcefully force them out of the only place they have to stay? That I believe is going to be your call on whether or not you just want us to cloud their title.
Send them to jail so they have a place to live.
There you go. And get medical.
But we absolutely need to have that conversation. I mean, none of us are, are gonna force somebody out of the only place they have to live. But at the same time, they're not supposed to move in in the first place.
You would think the wintertime would chase most folks out of those places.
There's people living in RVs.
And they're gonna, they're gonna burn in a nanosecond. I mean, it's a health and safety issue, big time.
So I think that that's another discussion that we need, that we need to have is how are we going to enforce that? And there's a level of building inspection or building code that our code compliance isn't going to be able to deal with. And, and that is that type of call on, if something's structurally sound. I mean, we can do placements, we can do even somewhat, we could do a, a non-compliance on a shed that someone's living in. But as far as.
Minimum standards for sheds up here.
Already have.
Cause like we did with the Moma Home Police in Donley there, we said your guys weren't built stout enough for a snow load and they changed their construction so it could.
Well, that, no, and that says that they cannot build a shed to meet our standards for snow loads, insulation and all of that.
The old Hickory Sheds, somebody gave us a, a plan on it. And right on there, it says not for human habitation. It's right on their plan that they sell you. And we gotta have two by six walls, we gotta have a snow load. We gotta see it being built. Or considered, you know, with these, you can't live on them. It says right on it, no human habitation.
So do we pick them out or do we do a notice of, um, compliance? I mean, you have to prove that they're living in there in order to, I mean.
You need to protect the county. So that's a whole different conversation. So for the notice of non-compliance, we just need to make sure that it removes the county's liability in that instance.
And, and then just, at some point, I just always like to get the plug in. I think we need to maybe look at some fire wise landscaping requirements. Those are the houses that survive.
And you read 400%. And in some of those subdivisions that are in the.
Compliance could take, could do that too.
So let's kind of form a planner before we go away because I still wanna find some good education for this code enforcement person. If you can find out about the SETI or whatever you call it. And see what else is available out there, whether it's online or what. Interpersonal relationships and that kind of dealing with obstreperous neighbors. Cause I, I really think this is coming harder than we think.
Doug, I think we need to put a person in that budget.
A lot of it is national and a lot of it is focused on urban, which is completely different than what we do. But one of my favorite things I ever learned was if you're going to a property, always carry something in your hand. So if the dog runs at you, you give them something to bite.
Just give your hand.
You know, a clipboard or a flashlight.
Thanks for coming in. Keep it light.
That's right. Those that go through post have a gun in their hand.